Hi, Mr. Pia. You approved the bill, I mean those approved.
We don't have any bill per se, but we have this uh, In-Kind Management Verification Form for the committee vote. We did. Are you ready else?
Uh, no.
So, um, this is just saying that we, the planning board of Granby, going out this many hours towards the project. We're not paying anything, we're just saying. No, we don't pay anything because the grant is paid for between us and Muncie.
Okay, yeah.
So, they just calculated that, so I want to do a sign up and make sure everybody understood.
Do you need a motion? I'm paying for the work.
Well, I'm gonna take the motion. I can read it.
I'll make a motion to accept. Uh, In-Kind Management Verification Form for the District Local Technical Assistance 2018 project. No, I'm reading. For the report, for the reporting period, January 2018 through December 2018.
For a second.
On paper.
Aye. Somebody opposed?
That's right, it was the 13th, it wasn't 10th.
Minutes from December 13, 2018. I'll make a motion that we hold December 13, 2018 minutes. I'm reading. For a second. Second now. On paper. Aye. All outstanding.
So approved.
There you go.
What's this exactly?
No, there ain't nothing on A and R.
Good evening.
That's a correspondence.
No, I think I'll wait till Jim is back.
Okay, you got your little placards there.
Oh, okay, oh cool.
You'll make sure you're official.
We do have from the, uh, D. Snacky, the chair for Granby Select Board, just regards to large-scale ground mounted solar energy system moratorium. If anybody's ever seen this or not, but I'll definitely pass it around so you can see it.
I brought a copy, I want to.
Real copy.
Thank you.
Yeah, Kathy sent it to everybody.
Okay, I want to make sure everybody saw it.
Have you done anything about that?
No, so I'm just gonna, uh... Can I postpone this to our next meeting? When Mr. Tropke is here. The full board.
What are we postponing?
This here.
Okay, that will go with the bylaw.
Yes.
Did you get any clarification on that general bylaw moratorium?
Uh, not any more than you saw before.
Okay, so you're assuming then it's gonna go forward as a general bylaw?
Yes, and, but we also, I didn't show, got a copy. So if you can read it.
Oh, you got a copy?
You got a copy there?
Oh, you did say that?
Yeah.
That's going to the general bylaws.
Right.
And then we would have to do that same thing to do in the zoning bylaws. If it passes.
Yeah, it's my opinion that it should be a zoning bylaw. But town council has said you can do it this way, so go with what town council is advising you, but it's generally done as a zoning bylaw.
And that, what you have there is written that the select board is gonna be using, correct?
Yes.
So?
Looks good. And here two is for, for the state. Anybody, campaign finance report. Just need to sign it. I believe it's, uh, let me see here.
Early expenses.
If you had no expense, you really need to sign off on this one.
Yeah, um, that's just kind of a reminder to anybody who's running for office.
But only, only people that had just ran this past year.
No, no, you need, everybody, you're elected official.
Every year.
But every year you have to go at a certain time.
So like if you had this, that, and the other?
But this is for all of us though. Each one of us has to sign it.
Really?
Yeah, so you go back to Kathy. Unless, for some reason, you didn't.
Well, it says here, "I certify I am a candidate to..." Four, 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 all of the same spots. What does the letter say?
But I've certified, I've not received a, but you are a candidate still for holding.
But it's, "To candidate, dear candidate, you must report current disclosure of financial..."
You just have to report that every year regardless, if you, because you're an elected official. So regardless if you're a candidate or not, you just have to... What you're doing is declaring that you've not received any funds or spent any funds for campaigning. Part of campaign finance.
I get it now. Now I'll have to do it.
Bob, can I have that sheet that you just gave me?
So if you did spend money and stuff like that, you have to actually fill it.
So we just have to sign that?
Just to sign it, yeah.
Okay. Why don't we do that before?
Do we do that now?
He gets pigeonholed.
The letter that goes up up there?
Is that the one? Yeah, thank you.
We didn't get set out to Kathy.
So this, this has been all right. You okay, Dave? Can I keep this?
You can. Says planning board on it, but it's addressed to the select board.
Um, I think, but the planning board, no, it's...
We're gonna have to hang onto that for Jim as well.
Yes. I'm gonna hang onto that, I'm sorry.
I can, you can hang it with you.
Bring it in. Are you ready, Andy?
No, I'm gonna put it back. I just don't want, um, not that Kathy will take it out, but I want to make sure she doesn't, so. It'll be a little sticky or something, we need to put on it, throw it out to... So this, so I can take it out, section 61A.
I've got one here.
I got one.
Also?
Yep. I think I might have someone. That'll go with there.
I don't know if anybody wants to see that, just regards to section 61A, property being sold.
Uh, so they're going to tell the town?
Yes.
Is it right up?
What? First I don't refuse, they don't want to purchase it? Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, can we go back to the moratorium issue again?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just sort of reviewed the new moratorium language. And so saying, it is going to be a zoning bylaw. And the planning board has to hold a public hearing on the proposed amendment?
Okay.
Have you scheduled that hearing yet?
We have not, this is the first time we've had a board together since the last.
I know whether I was, not, you know, following the agenda, but if you like to talk about it now, we can, we can address that.
We can, we have time.
What's that?
You're saying that it is a zoning bylaw, so the...
Yes, we have three or four other bylaws that we're changing. We have to go through that whole sequence too.
Right. So you need to advertise with the legal ad?
Right, we're not done with that, so we're trying to, because we can't go through them tonight because Jim is not here.
So, and you can't, is town meeting still scheduled for the fourth?
Yes.
So you have to have the public hearing before the town meeting?
Well, Chris Martin was saying, when I talked to him today, we did not have to have ours in as a bylaw for the February 4th meeting. We can do it after that.
Well, you know, you, town meeting, the moderator will ask for a report from the planning board on the article. And so you have to have the, the public hearing to allow the public the opportunity to come and and learn about the article. And then you have to vote to, you know, approve, you know, recommend approval or not.
Well, they're, they're doing two things from what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, Glenn, but the select board is putting it in the general bylaws.
Okay.
And we are putting it in the zoning bylaws.
Okay. So you won't be able to get your hearing in in time for the town meeting, so you won't be able to act on the zoning bylaw, have to come up at a later meeting.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Well, you know, I understand.
Kind of.
A little bit more.
It's not, it's not the best way to do it.
So you're actually doing both then, you're doing a general bylaw and a zoning bylaw? As a moratorium?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have the A and R?
So you might want to then, you know, pick a date to schedule your public hearing for the zoning.
Right, and hopefully we can go over the other bylaws.
That we want to change.
Finish touch.
Yeah.
Okay.
At the next meeting, assuming everybody's here, if not, I don't know.
Or if you look to schedule, if we need to schedule a meeting outside our regular second Monday of the month, that's fine, I mean, that's maybe what some people maybe look at too, so when Jim is back, we can actually just...
Do we know when he's coming back?
I believe he's coming back this week. So if for some reason, we all won't be at our next meeting, uh, the
28th?
28th, we should probably look at a different date.
That's right, we've got a public hearing that, that evening. For the Dickinson Solar Farm.
But we can also schedule something besides that if needed, though, too.
But I'll get the dates to work back from, because what, attorney general needs 90 days after we've approved it, or the town has approved it?
Right, there's, you don't have to back the date.
Days and weeks from there, so we're...
Same, we deal with the marijuana bylaw?
Yes.
Go to moratorium for that bylaw.
What do the other zoning articles say, uh, coming up?
I don't know, still by choice.
Have you had your hearings on those already?
No.
No.
We're gonna bring them all in at one time.
Well, are they on the warrant for the fourth?
No.
Oh, okay, okay.
Shouldn't all that stuff been forwarded to Bill from Susan?
I don't know. Did Susan forward any of it to you with the...
What are they again?
The zoning bylaws, changes.
Right, this is what, this is actually what we haven't chosen.
This was where, um, this was the attorneys responding to that.
So with the fee schedule, I think I'm gonna take that date off.
Okay. So you're doing, okay.
Our small, medium, large projects.
Okay. Yeah, I think I saw that.
And then this is a new one.
Okay.
A whole new one.
Okay.
So the town wants to purchase the property they made.
What we wanted to add, the side plan, the location bills.
Okay.
Which changes over there.
Okay.
Tax is to be paid, back tax to be paid.
I gotta figure out the wording. This one is on sidewalks.
Are we supposed to officially act on that?
Is this subdivision or?
Yes.
Okay.
This and the fee schedule are under the subdivision.
Okay, okay.
And...
Or is that just a courtesy copy?
We want to add this.
To us?
Okay.
I can't, actually, you can have this hard copy.
It's a CC to us, but it's addressed to the select board.
The question here was...
The select board may do the CC on it or not.
The quarter inch.
So in all likelihood, a lot of different...
They pitched one quarter inch. When Muncie Ridge came in last year were CC'd.
Right.
They had more than that because they were being ADA compliant. So we were supposedly changing our bylaws to make it ADA compliant.
I see.
And as far as the wording for the, um, uh, public hearing, I got some thoughts on this because you gotta say, you know, with the sidewalk revision we're doing, making it ADA compliant, we're adding words. But then, to do the, um, wording for the public, the town, special town meeting, you have to say, take out this, this, and this, and now put this and this. I think if we just replace the one that's wrong, the quarter inch, remember that one? Of course you don't remember.
Yes.
And just say, "Walks shall be constructed in compliance with ADA requirements." That would take care of that, and you wouldn't have to say, "Take out all these, put them back in."
I think he wants to spell ADA too right, is that what?
Well, we had ADA, and I did have American, yeah, compliance, American Disabilities Act, he said if it wasn't anywhere else.
Right, so they want to make sure.
And I believe it was, but we can just write it down anyway.
Okay.
So you can have this little packet.
Okay, great, thanks.
And I'll send them to you. Am I stealing yours too? No, that was the beginning of that. And you got this lovely little...
I think Susan did send them to me, I just got them to them, yeah.
I can reset it, just make sure. So that, we were just doing all of those, and then we'll add the newest one for the moratorium.
Okay.
And we also are going off key here. One of the other changes is this section that we were going over before. We were tidying up this. Excuse me. And then, we're adding a binum bylaw column, because in the last update it was locked off.
Okay.
And then I have changes that I put in, because this was blank. And I had questions on some, and those are purple. Yeah, here.
Okay. Okay. Good.
You want me to send that over?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. And, what are we doing now?
We have about 20 minutes before we have our A and R scheduled for.
Are you here for the A and R?
No.
No, we're there to discuss.
Yeah, we should have booked the application for my suit for solar.
We're just...
Maybe that's something we could, we could do now?
What if it's?
It's set for 6:30, so if anybody wanted to show up and hear about it, they wouldn't be here. Not fair to them.
Well, if you mind Kathy that we started earlier, so she went by the old time, we started at 6 o'clock.
Well, she had it right here, 5:30.
Yeah.
It was 5:30, yeah. Well, is there anything with the bylaw review update? Anything there we need to discuss?
Well, besides that big one, the big chart.
Yeah.
You gonna wait on that, or do you want to start?
Sorry, we have, you know, 20 minutes or time.
I mean, we did start once already. Do you have any?
You need a copy?
I have one extract of this. And I also started doing the reports for the special town meetings without all the the reason and whatnots and fancy wording and
Oh, good.
that we need to go over, but this is part of it, this is a big one right here.
Yeah, there's a lot to change.
You got yours here?
I think I do, so.
Now, Jim, when we were going through this the last time, Jim had asked for all of the all of the, um, documents that were submitted. You know, I didn't think we're actually gonna look like that. So in the last update in 2014, we paused, finished sentence.
Yep.
And I did get that, and the attorney general did have questions on this, especially the first one, two, three, four that were left after they questioned why on that. And I don't have, the purple tipped me, I don't have time for that.
I didn't, I didn't make a copy of it. You're talking about the attorney general's letter?
Right.
The seventh page?
Right.
I didn't bring it, I didn't print it.
You printed?
No, I didn't print it out. I thought we pretty much had this all tidied up on, uh,
Well, we kind of did.
December 10th.
I just want to go over, well, we got as far as accessory uses, right near the end. And where accessory uses starts. And that's where Jim said, check Kathy Kelly Reagan as to what was approved by the attorney general.
Oh, right.
Uh, bylaw 3.70.
Okay. Accessory uses continue.
Yeah, right where accessory uses starts. Go back to page 42. And, but we were at this purple one here, the second entry there. And, see, my whole thing with this chart is if you've never seen it before.
Confusing.
It's very confusing, especially with the, um, the definitions in the front. So we were kind of thinning those out. And trying to make sense of that, because if you look at the SP SB slash PB slash SPA, nobody knows what that is. So if it's a special permit and the planning board is supposed to do, who does the site plan approval? That's what is confusing. So we talked about on the, do you want me to start on that page with the?
We can start there, absolutely. Those accessory uses?
Those are good to that, all the rest of them seemed okay after that.
And the first one, home occupation, we agreed to change SP to SP slash PB dash
Well, if you're forming...
Site plan approval.
Right, so I would be re, relettering those to SP slash SPA dash planning board. So it tells you that both have to be approved by the planning board, does that make sense?
Yes. I mean, obviously, if, you know, if people don't understand it, they'll ask questions. Because as you said, it's not, if you're not, if you're not familiar with this, and you see it for the first time, you know, it's self-explanatory, but unless you kind of really understand everything, you still get asked questions.
Right. Um, and 3.71 is the same thing, special permit, site plan approval, planning board. Next page. Special permit only, planning board. Now, question though. You've got, um, what is the difference between residential, which doesn't need a site plan approval, and village center, each day? Because you've got the other, um, residential mixed, a motor unit, and general business, called site plan approval, she says that. Why won't the others?
Good question.
Yeah.
Should we add site plan approval?
I mean, you can make an argument in the village, you know, we're...
I wonder if it's just because it's the village area.
Well, residential too, the first column has it.
Well, I'm wondering if it's, if it's not mentioned residential, because you'd be having this home studio or business in a home.
Site plan approval? What if you're...
Where does the site plan approval fit though?
It's not there now.
Yeah, it's not, are you looking at it there?
Well, my question is if, well, my first question was a purple there, it said site plan approval. I'm sorry, special permit, but it didn't say by whom. So that I would put in PB planning board. But then, why does just the village... But then why does just the village center and the residential not have site plan approval?
Well, you know, it's obviously an expense for homeowner who wants to open a business to have to prepare a site plan. Generally, that's an engineering cost. Could be a couple of thousand dollars to do that. Is that something you want to require?
And that's very possibly the way that the old regime had looked at it.
Yeah.
That we didn't want to saddle, or they, when they put all these together, didn't want to saddle a homeowner with an existing home.
Right.
With that expense.
Right.
So that makes sense then, in that way to leave it.
Right.
And then the paragraph down the middle there, at the end, no one could know, no one knew what.
F, the building?
Yeah.
That sounds, yes. Letter F in the building, yes.
We're taking that out, yes. And then 3.73. Not clear who has what, so we're doing ZBA, special permit, planning board, site plan approval. And the residential and the residential multi-tenant.
We're doing, we're going to leave ZBA or we're going to put planning board as well?
ZBA is just for the special permit.
Great.
But the planning board has site plan approval.
Okay, so we're going to put site plan approval PB.
Yes.
Yeah, I think you should because the, the usual regulations have a site plan approval, special permit by the ZBA as well. So if we want the planning board to do the site plan approval and the ZBA grant the special permit, then you should say the planning board will do the site plan.
Right. So that was all true for the.
But that's also, you know, two boards, you know, it's a lot of extra time and effort. Can the ZBA handle the site plan for that kind of a home shop?
I thought that we looked up in the, in our bylaws, there was nothing that said, or there was something that said only planning board can grant site plan approval.
Right, so that's why we'd have a joint meeting then too, right?
Yeah.
Talk to those people.
Right, and there's only, in all the bylaws, there's only five areas that the ZBA is concerned with.
Okay. I'm just trying to read.
Get everything else.
Read the language of the bylaw. It says SP, ZBA dash SPA, used to allow by special permit from zoning board of appeals with site plan approval. But you think that means site plan approval by the planning board?
Site plan, SP, site plan approval for ZBA.
Dash SPA.
Except for that's a planning board.
It doesn't say.
Yeah, see, it doesn't say that.
Doesn't say by planning board.
Which is why we reworded those.
Okay.
Letters to say ZBA or SP dash ZBA and then SPA dash.
Okay. So the ZBA doesn't do any site plan reviews?
That's my understanding.
Okay, okay.
For the planning board.
Okay, and the general business is, I'm not sure why, but it's all planning board. And no ZBA for that one.
Where? 3.7.3?
Yeah, under general business.
Well, you have a special permit, ZBA, site plan approval.
Put in planning board.
So we're taking ZBA out of the.
Well, that was my question. We should probably leave them in.
Yeah, we'll just put.
Same as the others.
Yeah, site plan approval PB.
Okay, not allowed in industrial 1 and 2 and under village center. We'll do the same thing as all the others.
Make it equal to the other three.
Right.
Where everything's purple, there was nothing there before?
Where everything's purple, I'm questioning. It just says special permit. My question is by whom?
By whom, yeah.
Okay, then, next page, doesn't run wrong. 3.74 did not have anything in the village center. If you look, that Y is a very faint purple.
Why?
So I'm saying if it's lopped in the others, why is it not allowed?
It was, it was just one.
Yes, and I think that's one of the general question. Why was it left there?
So it should be allowed.
Yes, I would say. Everybody agree with that?
Say that again.
On the 3.7.4, top of the next page. Village center at the end, the VC did not have anything in there.
My online version has a Y there already.
But it's a purple Y.
No, on the online version.
Oh, right.
That's on the website, it has a Y there already.
Okay, well, that didn't come out online.
That answers the question.
So no need to change?
No. Just leave it as one.
On the previous page, we're on 3.72, there's something at the very end says F, the building.
Yeah, we're allowing, nobody knew what that was, so we're just lopping that along.
Okay, good.
Didn't make sense. Okay, 3.7.5, this is another one where we're doing special permit, ZBA, and site plan approval, planning board. In those three areas that it already is in. So it makes sense?
Yes.
Okay. Found it right along. Nothing on the dimensional, dimensional tables. So back to the beginning. I just want to make sure I have the.
Definitions or not?
Yes, the definitions. So we have Y equals use per, Y is just use permitted. Then I put down SP means special permit, SPA, site plan approval. And then we go SP dash SPA slash PB. Use allowed by special permit and site plan approval from the planning board. Okay?
On the one above, do you want to say with site plan, use allowed with site plan approval by the planning board?
Use allowed by special permit and site plan approval from planning board.
From the planning board. Right, and then the one above that, which is just SPA?
That's the one above that currently says SPA. So if we do SP dash SPA, it's going to mean the special permit, site plan approval by the planning board. And just plain old SPA, use allowed with site plan approval from planning board.
Right, right.
And the next one that has the zoning board of appeals, and the very last one are duplicates. They just say it kind of differently.
But I thought we just said that zoning board of appeals is not allowed to grant site plan approval.
They have it in. Yeah, that's what, that was what was mentioned before and I don't think that's entirely true. Because if you look at the first page of the table, under commercial recreational camping.
Yeah.
Yes, and the next one down, that's all.
Those should be changed to, well, site plan approval by planning board.
Right, but the ZBA has everything else. Does that make sense? So if we say SP dash SPA ZBA, I mean, we'll throw our pull out for that. We can say use allowed by special permit with site plan approval from the zoning board of appeals. It's kind of a similar wording as the planning board, but.
I'm also wondering, you know, how we just put everything together here too. But I'm wondering if we should have a chart that actually says, you know, PB is planning board, SB is select board.
Added to.
SBA is zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
You know, that actually indicates what each, what each thing, what each one stands for.
So in other words, get rid of that last one.
I don't know, maybe use permitted.
So we could, yeah, so you have the planning board with all the letters, both site plan approval and special permit.
Right, I'm just saying, should we have one that, with regards to all of this?
Those others in the beginning.
Right, should say, you know, what each one stands for.
Right, but then.
Because there might be something that we're missing here somewhere that, you know.
Mr. Chair, it's 6:10.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, can we continue?
Yes, ma'am. So 6:10, we have an A and R for Chickaby Street.
It's actually Bagso Road.
Could you folks please, everybody that's coming, could you please sign in on this sheet, please? I'm sorry.
It's already bagged, okay, Bagso.
Bagso, yeah. That wasn't open.
Is that in one?
Yes, it is.
Okay, this is my dad's property, place I grew up. It's like about 13 acres of, you guys can rent it out. So, yeah, we're planning on selling the house and a one acre lot there and keeping the rest every day. And I want to go down this block.
So you're cutting out that.
Right, this section right here, there's a road ends right there and this is a wood road going down there. So we have to give 150 feet of footage you need and then basically try to just, you know, make it fit the yard of the existing one.
And is there any other way to get into the rest of this?
Uh, no, this is, this is all discontinued road here and this is all budding properties, yeah. The string comes through here.
Oh, those are all budding properties, you're not?
Over here and, yeah, the, the, the Zinniacs own all of that other stuff.
Own this stuff here?
Every, no, everything around it. This, this is the Johnson.
This whole thing is?
Yeah, this is the Johnson 13 acres and that's the part.
So they basically just kind of miss out?
Correct.
But to get into this part here.
We would have to come in through here.
You'd have to make a road.
Well, yeah, we're not planning on developing, we're just keeping, keeping it.
And you got the furniture?
133. 83.
130, no, call 136 at 14, yeah. And you're over the 40,000 square feet.
Is there any problem with access to that lot from the road? Any steep slopes or whatever, do anything like that?
Where the, the house is.
Oh, on the furniture?
No, no, that's, that's the property right there.
Oh, still already, okay. Oh, I see.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's an existing house.
Right, so you're just, you're selling a house, you're cutting out a piece of property.
I see, okay.
And we're retaining the rest.
Is the property under chapter program?
No.
I lost it. There, there's, um. No determination is made to the responsibility.
Oh, okay, so you don't need this.
We do have to date the sign. Bob has the pen. But I suppose you could do it, he has the bylaw.
I'm in the bylaw.
Oh, and I'll take the application.
Sorry, it's curled.
It's okay.
So it becomes two lots, right?
Yes.
End of check.
Page and end of check.
Now, the check is.
Two lots. Two lots, is that 250?
Yeah, 1.25.
Anybody still need concerns with it? No.
Maybe I'll keep the time very low.
Take a vote, just there.
Yeah, we should take a vote.
Motion.
Motion to approve this A and R for Paul Johnson, Bagso Road, as shown by the planning board, Arlo Beck.
Second.
Associates, Inc.
I'll second that.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose?
Don't you, Mark Schutz working for, for that.
Yeah, yeah, he was the one actually that was heading you in the drawn.
He was with DL Dean for a number of years.
Yeah, they're connected somehow because that same address in Westfield is.
I said it's DL Dean and Arlo Beck, I don't know exactly how they're.
So you, you said it was 125 each or 250?
250, so. This is on your thing. We can actually read it.
Oh.
What's the reason for two mileage?
Uh, I think that's.
One of them stays with us and the other one gets, uh.
Okay.
Registered.
Okay.
Right, Bob?
I believe that's the way it works, yes.
Yeah, I think they did check exactly. Is there a third page?
There, three month long, two.
Wait.
This guy.
This one, so.
Yeah, guidelines to buy, do you want back or?
Yeah, I guess, if you want to.
No.
Yeah, that's, that was in here, the thing about the color, the colors that they indicated.
Because we were not getting that, I just, the other guidelines just said things need to be done such as, and they just did the such as. Well, you need to take the. To get them registered.
Oh, do I, do I have your file list?
Yes. Right, you take your registry.
Registry.
And get a file.
And is that in town or?
No, no. Yeah, we'll record it. Sorry. I don't see. Probably hangs together now.
Which copies do we need?
I don't, I don't see that part down here. Well, yeah, let's see.
What part of this thing do we like?
Yeah, let's continue up there, let's continue it. For us too.
You opened the public hearing on the solar project in August?
So about that.
Okay. The four members here tonight, were they present at the public hearing when it opened?
Yeah, we were.
Have you seen a copy of the, a video of the, of the meeting or read a transcript or something like that?
No, no.
So you need four voting members?
Right.
And all of them need to have been at the.
It's actually.
At all the sessions of the hearing. So it doesn't sound like they're ever going to open the meeting tonight. If you were not.
But we can't continue it.
You can continue it, but you can't really, you know, hear it. Have you?
They're actually ready for it.
Does the town, has it adopted the Mollan rule? Which says that a member. Which says that a member, if he misses one session of the hearing, can view...
We can actually, you know, we can go back and...
And look at the tape?
Tape, and stuff like that, and any, um, material that might have been documentation that was presented at that.
Correct, right, so if you've adopted that, then you could go back and look at that and grab the session, and then you would be able to...
Yeah. It indicates that if you can go back and you receive all the information, if you were at a meeting, go back and receive all the information, if you were at the meeting.
Multiple meetings, because...
You know, you're allowed to do that one time.
No. He, he's, he's, the board is actually appointed before.
Okay, yeah.
He was actually a member at that time.
Okay. Were you an associate member at the time?
And she was on my list.
So, you're allowed to miss one meeting and view the tape?
Right, but if you were actually a member at that time, you know that...
I think, yes, good question, I think you could still... Still do it.
That, that actually, yes. Keep it in the case, and actually was a...
Yeah, even a member that, yeah.
Yeah, until October twenty-third, I'm on.
Okay. Is that the only session where you opened the hearing?
So, why don't you get one of them?
It was opened there, and it just continued.
Just continued since then, okay.
Yeah, I just assumed they would have to be, uh, be able to vote.
They would have to abstain from...
So, we split them then?
Yeah, we need four voting members to open a special permit. Now, the fifth member, was he or she there at the time of the hearing?
Yes.
Okay. So, you still have, you still have enough members to vote, even if you can't vote, but they're just...
Thank you.
But they're just not here tonight.
Okay, thank you. Want to say?
Yep.
Right, so, six fifteen.
We need to close.
I make a motion that we close our meeting so that we can open the, uh, public hearing, and we will reconvene our meeting after the... Yeah, at the end of the public hearing.
Need a second?
I'll second that motion.
A favor?
Oh, a favor? Aye.
Okay. Now, we can move on.
Public hearing to, continue the hearing to consider the application of Borrego Solar Systems, Inc., at fifty-five Technology Drive, Suite 102, Flow Mass 01851, for special permit and site plan approval, as required in the following sections of the Grammy Bylaw. Section three point zero, Table one, Schedule, the Use Regulations. Section five point nine nine, Large-Scale Grounded Mounted Solar Photovoltaic Insulations. Section six point two, Special Permits. Section six point three, Site Plan Approval. The applicant's proposed to install a six point two megawatt DC ground-mounted solar photovoltaic facility on approximately thirty acres, thirty acre portion of parcel land located at Zero Kendall Street, Assessor Parcel ID is eight dash B dash five, owned by Breezy Acres LLC, of twenty-five Pleasant Street, Grammy Mass, which is located within the residential Signal Family, RS zoning district.
Mr. Chairman, if I may...
Yes, sir.
I would like to move to continue this hearing, due to the fact that Mr. Chauvin cannot vote on this. We are down a member, meaning Mr. Tronkey, and we really can't take discussion in the fact that we need a supermajority, four members, to vote on this project. With Mr. Tronkey not here, who's been here from the inception, I'd like to make a motion to continue this hearing.
Yeah, is there a continuing date? Never mind?
Well, we have, um, a public hearing on our next one, on the twenty-eighth, so our next meeting will be February eleventh.
I'm gonna say, I, I think February eleventh, if that works with the applicant, um, would probably be better than trying to do, uh...
Yes.
To do a public hearing to the same night.
So, included in my motion, I'd like to make an add that we will continue the public hearing for Breezy Acres LLC to Monday, February eleventh, at five forty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
All in favor.
Okay. I have a motion to, uh...
Open.
Open our regular meeting?
Make that motion to...
Reconvene.
Reconvene.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, six twenty, is signed for twenty-four West Eight Street? No, anybody? No, someone here for a sign for twenty-four West Eight Street? No? Okay. Do you have any information on it? You don't have anything, right?
I believe what was going around with the building inspector and everything, and actually Jim Tronkey was pretty instrumental in that with a previous agreement that the...
Is that the same one?
The old plant, I believe it's Cinderellis?
Twenty, is that twenty-four West Eight Street?
Oh, West Eight.
That's the Stony Brook.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm confusing the two.
That's the Stony Brook.
Straight bar, straight down.
What is the question, or what is the issue with this sign?
We, I don't know.
We don't know. We don't have any documentation, and nobody's here.
No one's here for it, so...
Okay. Does the planning board have any kind of a review of sign applications?
Yes.
Yes.
You do, okay. So, it must be something like that, then?
Yeah.
Right.
Quite possible.
Could be, okay.
So, we'll have to...
And you should actually get a copy of the, you know, of the materials before the meeting as well, so you have a chance to look it up.
Well, we usually do, and that's why we was here to, you know, present for it, too, so, 'cause we don't have any information on it besides that, right?
Right.
I just simply thought that it was...
Oh, the other one?
The one that was being discussed, uh, with the building inspector.
Let me just double check before I enter here.
So, six... So, um, I don't believe Kathy has distributed the documents, that's it, right there, I believe, the big one.
For the sign?
No, nothing for the sign. We don't have anything in it for the sign.
I'm just double checking.
Lions.
What's this for?
That, and the one in front of it.
Tyne Bond? This here? No, it's Borrego.
This.
This here?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll table the sign.
Let's do this table to, to have more information on her, when the applicant shows up for it.
Easy, huh?
So, six thirty, we have, uh, Lion Street Solar Application Discussion. What would that be?
That's...
Okay.
I can explain why, why we're here.
Okay.
Come on up.
I'm Brian Ames with, uh, Tyne Bond, here on behalf of C.B. Red Rock Solar LLC.
Mike Reska, here on behalf of C.B. Red Rock Solar LLC.
So, we have been harassing Kathy to no end, very nicely, and she's been extraordinarily helpful, but as, as you can imagine, um, she provided us with the notice of our meeting in the moratorium. Uh, our application was submitted on December twenty-eighth, um, and we have just been seeking information on when and how the planning board is going to act on it, and Kathy suggested that we come and have, uh, an informal discussion with you.
Okay.
So, I'm, you know, happy to tell you about the project briefly, but our question is, is, our questions are more administrative at this point, um, prior to the opening of an actual public hearing.
And I also have to see how the moratorium plays effect on us, too, 'cause after the moratorium was, the temporary moratorium was in place before...
The application.
The application. Right, you said December twenty-eighth, you...
December twenty-eighth, uh, was our subpoena.
Okay.
Yep, and it was stamped.
It says stamped, no?
This says stamped December fourth.
Definitely was...
Maybe we're not...
December fourth.
Yes, the wrong one. No, South Street.
Okay, wrong one.
So, right, so with the moratorium, moratorium being in place, or, excuse me, temporary moratorium being in place, uh, I have to see where, where it stands with this right now, as far as moving forward.
I guess that we, we were interested to, uh, be here through the last hearing as well, and, uh, I'm wearing two hats, we were the peer of bureau on the...
Right.
Like, would you, and I'm not sure if you can answer this, could you have acted on that if all your members were here?
I don't think so, I don't...
We can just still discuss on it, right.
We still have missing information.
There is information, we're still waiting, uh, and, uh, one of the things we did ask about whether or not, what our options were for that, too, with the temporary moratorium going, going into place, so, their application was in, we started discussion on it, um, prior to the moratorium.
But we can't issue any permits until after the voting on the moratorium. If it's, if it gets voted in, then we still can't issue any permits until September thirtieth. If it gets a no vote, then we could go ahead.
We move forward, right.
But in the meantime, we could review documents if you wanted to spend the money doing that.
We continue to, uh, review the documentation, that they still present some other, um, documentation to us, as well, so...
Right, but at the same time, the, um, they will, we're gonna be looking at our solar bylaws, and any changes we make will be applied to anybody, including Borrego. They'll have to abide by any changes in that.
Right, if we don't have protection, um, from a zoning freeze, then any zoning amendments would apply to any project.
Right. Right. Does that make sense?
I think it does. The question lies in the fact that we submitted, but hasn't been accepted, in understanding that, you know, the moratorium may, may change.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think what, you know, Brian and Kurt, whoever, just seeking some feedback on whether or not it can be accepted, knowing that you may not be able to act on that pending the change.
Or, or it sounds like you may be accepting and willing to review, but couldn't issue a permit, truly just trying to gather information, we're all open to this.
Right, from, that's what I understand.
That is, right, we, it can be accepted, but, um, we can listen to the discussion, but technically, with the moratorium, we can't act on anything until...
I don't believe that that's what I heard at the select board meeting, when it was, when the moratorium, the temporary moratorium was proposed. I believe I heard from the administrative assistant that he said to the select board, you have to make a choice, because you already have one in the pipeline, meaning a solar facility, uh, Breezy Acres LLC. Is this gonna be a blanket moratorium or not? Are you gonna allow the one that's in the pipeline to continue? And if I'm not mistaken, the select board said, well, they've already spent money, this is already in the...
Right.
Motion, but we're not gonna accept any more.
There was a comment from town council on that, on that matter, he said, um, if a permit is granted prior to town meeting, there should be a notation that the permit may be affected by the proposed amendment, moratorium.
Right.
So, I think you go ahead and act on the one that's already in the pipeline.
Right, that's what was set.
And then put that as a condition that it could not...
Would not take any new, new applications, proposed projects.
I think that's correct.
Right, till the moratorium is set.
Right.
Whether the moratorium is passed or not passed, that's what we're waiting for.
Yeah, February fourth is your big date.
Once the hearing is advertised, it goes into effect, so technically it's in effect now, if it's been advertised.
Yep.
Well, the hearing has already taken place.
Okay.
The general bylaw here.
Okay.
Right.
Right, it's a little confusing, so...
Yes.
You'd probably apply the same standard.
This is where it's getting confused.
Right.
So, then the question, because it's stamped, we're on, we're on a time limit now. Question becomes, do you wanna continue, or do you wanna, I still can't get the, withdraw without prejudice, or something, and come back again?
Right.
After?
We haven't accepted it yet.
The clock hasn't started yet.
Yeah.
There's a clock for you to accept it.
Yep.
And bring that, you know, once you accept it, then you have the scheduled hearing.
Right, 'cause we don't even have it, we don't have, it's not here.
She hasn't...
She hasn't stamped it.
She hasn't accepted it, yeah.
She needs town clerk. Kathy, one?
Yeah, Kathy has all the material, she hasn't distributed to any of the other departments yet, she's waiting to find out what we're doing tonight.
Including town clerk for a, a time stamp?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm getting my, my project to accept it, yes, she has not stamped it, as far as I know.
Yeah, but it's a little confusing, we have a sort of stamp received, but not, uh, I'm not sure.
Not stamped by the town clerk. Yeah.
Right, notification that they did receive it, but the actual application hasn't been accepted yet. That makes sense.
About as much sense as this moratorium, so... It's as clear as mud.
It's, it's tough, especially in the middle of things that are going on right now.
The clarity, we're trying to see, 'cause this is really hard, a bigger project in Ludlow, it just so happens we're on the Grand Line, and we're a third of the project, across the, so we're actually, it's not a tag, so we're in Ludlow, um, so we're just trying to clarify this, to follow these two perma tracks, or, kind of, see.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we would have to work, have joint meetings with the Ludlow Planning Board.
It would be helpful to have the same peer review engineer on the project for both tasks.
We have the same, uh, wetland peer reviewer, we are proceeding with our Grammy Conservation Commission application, we have a public hearing...
That's good.
...uh, scheduled for that. We're all, we're cruising ahead in Ludlow, uh, it's unclear whether Ludlow Planning intends on hiring a peer reviewer, um, but truly the question is, uh, what, what do we do with the folks? And I realize there's some decision-making on our part, we're just trying to, so, for, just so I can clarify, in your, with your current understanding of moratorium, would you, are you leaving it up to the applicant to decide whether we want the planning board to initiate its review, with the understanding that you could not issue a permit?
Yes, I would say yes.
Until September?
But an application hasn't been accepted, so you're just more or less here for information.
Well, the application is with Kathy.
Right, but as, as, as Bob was saying earlier, it hasn't been accepted yet, I think we're accepting any applications to the moratorium as either passed or denied, whatever the vote is on that.
Well, I think we need to know something from a legal aspect, and I don't know, maybe Bill can help. Are, are we shut, are, are we shut down now for accepting?
I would say yes, I would say that, I mean, I'm not a lawyer.
Right, understand, yes.
So, that's something I can actually ask, uh, our town administrator to tell.
So, we can't officially stamp it and, and review anything until after the moratorium is voted on?
That would be helpful for you to clarify, and I, I personally, I'm here because I, I don't think Kathy could answer all my questions, so she should direct a meeting.
Yep. Uh, I may have to catch the town attorney on that, are you gonna do that?
I am, I'm gonna reach out to our town, town administrator and have him, uh, contact the town council in regards to whether or not the application can be accepted at this time or not, or we have to wait till, uh, the vote on the moratorium takes place.
Are we the only one that has submitted since the January secondary advertisement? Are we the only one that has submitted since the January 2nd hearing after 2019?
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean... Officially submitted?
Well, there's another one that was pre, another solar project that was previously approved by the planning board.
Oh, that's right.
And they are now going for revisions, which kind of started the process again. They're making, it's two separate areas. One is gonna be decreased in panels, the other one's gonna be increased. The, uh, the first, the, the plan that was approved was for, uh, stationary mounted panels. Now they want to change them to where they track what they said.
Yes.
And they're, they're, they have the same basic footprint where they're, you know, where everything's gonna be, but they're moving things down, they're changing the panels, so... That's a big change.
And town council has said that they're protective for the one that's been approved, but not protective for the moratorium, for the one that they're proposing.
Right.
They could run under that moratorium.
Right. Because it's, they're changing it.
And whatever changes are made in this solar bylaws.
Are subject to...
So, Mr. Section, can, uh, contacts Chris Martin, who contacts town council, how can we hear what the outcome of that discussion is?
So Kathy has your information?
Yep.
So I'll ask Kathy to email you.
Okay. Okay.
So we should, a week or so?
I, I would think so, I'm, I'm gonna talk to, uh, Mr. Martin tomorrow, and he'll obviously reach out to town council, and depending when they get back to him, and then we'll... I'd say within a week or so, hopefully we should know. If not, feel free to reach out to myself or Kathy. Okay?
All right.
Does, does that help any, or?
Yeah. Do we have Lovlo information?
Yeah, I think that's on Kathy's pulse.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
6:42. Yeah, so...
I don't think we have.
Anything else, or do I want to leave early, so?
Yeah, you've got one minute before you leave.
My clock must be, must be off than everybody else. I still got three minutes, I must be losing time.
You mentioned that during the moratorium, the board wants to look at the solar bylaw. Have you started to put a process together to do that, or?
No.
As soon as, I think as soon as we're done with these bylaws and get that in the pipeline, then we can focus on, I know it has to be done, let's guess, before June.
Right.
A special, a special town meeting.
PBPC could probably help you with that if you wanted to...
I think we definitely will reach out to them, yes. If, if the moratorium is, I mean, came out...
So that means you.
Yeah.
Is there anything else, anybody, while we're here?
No, we're gonna wait and continue the bylaw review at the next meeting.
I think so, yes.
And I will send you all of the documents, Rob, you already had them, right?
I do.
You have a permitting, a plan update here as well?
Oh, um...
Permitting guide update?
Oh, we did that before you came. I had the in-kind sheet to, uh, to sign, so, because it was a DLT grant.
Okay.
That we did that, and it just has to show we, we put in X number of hours. The permitting guide, um, just to bring everybody up to date, is, um, basically done. PBPC, Becky, at PB... PC. Finalized things, she put in state regulations and all that, but I just, I found out the other day that both Chris Martin and, um, the building inspector have changes. They, they had them before, but they never brought them forward.
Okay.
So, I have to get those, but we have the documents, we can make changes to it, so. I can get it printed, a few anyway.
Great.
Okay?
Can I have a motion adjourned? Is there a second?
Second, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.